Thank you. You can't hear me. The October 23rd School Committee meeting. We're going to start off with, for the record, everybody introduce yourselves, starting over on that side, and we'll go around and introduce ourselves real quickly.
June Sanfilippo, Business Manager.
Mark Lorenz, School Committee Member.
Nicole Alteri, School Committee Vice Chair.
Kathy Riley, School Committee Chair.
Amy Oaks, School Committee Member.
Mark Branco, Superintendent.
Jess Delisi, School Committee Member.
Henry Park, Student Representative.
The first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from October 2nd. I assume everybody had a chance to review them. I know Jess did. Pardon me?
No. No, okay.
Okay, okay. Okay. So can I have a motion to approve these minutes if no one has changes?
So moved.
Second? Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, now it's time that we open the floor to public comment.
So we're assuming everybody here is for presentations and not for public comment, but if you are for public comment, just let us know.
Okay.
Awesome.
Do we have any correspondence?
We do. So in your drive, I included an email that came to the school committee box regarding the Community Health Needs Assessment Survey. And so we don't have to go through it formally tonight. What I would like is a little direction, Madam Chair, from the committee. Just my recommendation is that we take this back to our nurses and counseling team and principals, take a look at it, because I, we, as this governing body, including myself, don't have a lot of information on this. Find out what it is. Are other districts participating? What's the value added? And then if, so if you're okay just giving me direction to do that, I'll do that and kind of let the health experts in the school district make a decision on whether or not we're going to participate in this.
And this is to go out to parents, correct, not students?
Correct. So is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I think we support that. Okay. Donations.
We do. So a big thank you to Josephine and Sean Lowe for donating the book Wolf in the Snow by Martha Cordell to the RAS Library. And really, really heartwarming donation, group of community members who stepped up in memory of Russell Welch, who is our paraprofessional, Katie Welch's dad, passed away. In lieu of flowers, they had asked that community members made donations to the music department. So these are all the people who have contributed up to $485, and so we thank them very much for their contributions to the music department and very sorry to Katie and her family for their loss. And I think it's a beautiful way to just keep adding their memories. So we just will need a motion to accept all the gifts as presented.
Do I have a motion to accept the gifts as presented?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Do you have any personnel at this time?
No personnel at this time.
Okay, we're going to do the crowd a favor and we're going to jump down to new business 10A, because we know, we can see all your smiling faces out there. And we'll jump to the Project Lead the Way presentation.
So Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we adjust the agenda and hear Project Lead the Way now, rather than where it's originally scheduled.
Okay, so is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, come on up to the table in the front.
Guys are up.
You'll have one of these, one of these lovely microphones. You can press it to speak. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Hi, I'm Ale Favaza. I am the middle school engineering and computer science teacher. And I have started implementing Project Lead the Way for the first time this year at the middle school. I am teaching a series of courses you're going to hear more about. But I just wanted to give you my two big pieces of feedback, which are that this program has been allowing me to do two things, one of which I know is a weakness of mine, and one of which I know I just wasn't kind of, I didn't, I wasn't organized enough to get it done well. I've been trying to reach out to the community and get like career exposure and like job information from community members, parents, others, experts in their fields, just people working in the world. And introduce the students to that, and this program incorporates that in a really timely, organized manner. And I think it's probably going to do a much better job sticking with them when they get to see it, read it, hear it, as opposed to just anecdotes of me telling them like, oh, I know a guy who does this. So that I have really, really loved. And the other thing that it does that I know is a weakness of mine is, and I think you're going to actually hear this as maybe a little bit of a critique on their part, but one of the parts of engineering that I always struggled with and still struggle with is actually writing the things down and documenting them. And so this is really, really pushing them to do that and using some of those planning tools and design, not just strategies, but like, like actual recording when you want to file a patent, anything that you want to go forward doing in the engineering field. This pushes them to do a lot more of that than I have made them do in the past. So without further ado, this is students taking the classes.
You can pick it right up and then you can pass it down the row, so you don't have to.
Hi, I'm Vanessa and I'm taking Science of Tech with Ms. Favaza. And Science of Tech is one of my favorite classes, because even though we are clearly having fun, it's obvious that we're learning stuff, because it's right there in the notes. For example, we tested the strength of different fabrics, and that was really hands-on and fun. And, but we also took a lot of data on that, and that was probably one of my favorite projects that we did.
Hi, I'm Abby Base, and I'm in sixth grade. I'm taking Science of Technology. Science of Technology is so fun and we learn so much. I love that we get to work together and build on each other's strengths. One of my favorite projects we did was making ice cream. We used salt to lower the freezing temperature. And I loved working as a team. Science of Technology is so fun.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Cody. I'm a sixth grader and I'm taking Science of Technology. In our group, everyone has a role. I find the answer, Abby puts it into words, and Vanessa and Eliza find the evidence. The ice cream project was the best so far, we can all agree. And we were using salt to lower the freezing temperature of the ice cream. We're all paying attention and having fun at the same time.
Hi, my name is Eliza Finks, and I'm in sixth grade taking Science of Technology. What I like best about it is that we get to do really fun projects, and during the projects, we get to make our own plan of who we work with and usually what steps we do it in.
Hi, I'm Willa, and I'm taking, I'm in seventh grade taking Magic of Electrons. One of my favorite things that we did was the like motors and electromagnets. And we like did some cool engineering things where we like lit light bulbs with lemons. And that's the electromagnet that the three of us made, right there. And that was really fun, because we got to see how it worked. So something I like about the class is that like you get to see like all the work you're doing. You can see it out when you make the circuits and things like that.
Hi, I'm Mimi. I'm in seventh grade and I'm taking Magic of Electrons. And I like this class, because in our group, we all have like different strengths, and the projects are cool. And we analyze our work a lot, and my favorite project so far was we made an electromagnetic over there. And yeah.
It's working, thank goodness.
I'm June Bur McCoy. I'm in eighth grade, and I'm taking App Creators. I like App Creators, App Creators, because it's really helpful, like working together to like solve different problems. And there's like so many solutions for every problem. And I would definitely continue this into high school, because it's like nice getting to like test real apps and like solve problems, like working together. And like Ms. Favaza said, like the documenting can be like really tedious. And yeah.
I really appreciate that you all came to talk to us tonight. It takes organization to get your homework done so that you can come out. And it also takes courage to stand up in front of us and in front of the audience, and so thank you for doing that. I am curious to know whether any of you have homework from this class. Does this create homework?
We did have a homework assignment yesterday, but I wouldn't necessarily call it homework, because it was just writing down simple machines that you could find anywhere. And it was actually really fun. And today we even got to do a project on it and just like go around the school and look for simple machines.
And then my second question is, just with a show of hands, how many of you so far would recommend this class to a friend? Good, thank you.
My question is going to be similar. I know the eighth grader said you were thinking about taking, you'd like to continue in high school. I'm wondering, as sixth and seventh graders, could you envision yourself taking another class next year? Yeah. That's great. Thank you for coming out tonight to speak with us. It's nice to hear what's happening in your classes.
And thank you for telling me why you add salt to the ice for making ice cream. When I was younger, we would always make homemade ice cream, and nobody ever told me why you add salt to the ice, so finally.
Did you get to eat it? Did you eat the ice cream?
Well, I mean, that's why it's the favorite project.
Awesome.
Who's tasted the best? Was it at least good?
Yeah, I made caramel ice cream.
That was the best.
Only a few of the bags broke and made the ice cream a little bit salty.
My name is Becky Guarino. I'm a junior attending Rockport High School. And I actually don't take a Project Lead the Way class this year. I was kind of inspired, last year I took Introduction to Engineering Design, and it just kind of inspired me to come on here and talk about like what I learned and stuff like that. Like along with the class, I got to give credit to Mr. Sabo. He's a great teacher. He really like showed us how to do stuff and kind of inspired us on a lot of things. One of my favorite things we did last year, it wasn't, we did it in class, but me and a couple of my friends, we, it was a project on building a trabouchet or catapult. And me and a couple of my friends, we got together and we made a trabouchet probably nine, 10 feet tall. We have a video of it, if you would like to see it, but that's kind of what I came on here to talk about.
My name's Adam Beaton. I'm also a junior, and I'm currently taking Principles of Engineering. My favorite part of like the Project Lead the Way thing was that I didn't really know what I wanted to do in college, like before this class, but now that I got to take like an engineering class, I've gotten to know that I want to like pursue that further. And like my favorite project this year, we're making like cars basically to play tug of war and see which one pulls better, and we use like motors and stuff. And Mr. Sabo really does help that, and he makes the class fun and like not like a stressful thing.
Another thing I want to say, Adam kind of brought it up, is like inspiring me to take like a high school class, like a high school engineering class, is I kind of feel like in middle school, I miss a lot of chances with engineering and stuff like that due to COVID. So I kind of just feel like taking a high school class, like a lot of people should do it, just try something new. Maybe you'll find something that'll like prove a career later on in life.
When you think about the classroom, where you take the class or where you took the class, if you could wave your magic wand over that classroom, are there things that you wish were in that room? Other pieces of equipment, other things? Just thinking about the supplies and materials and technology that you have access to so far.
So I kind of feel like, I don't take the class this year. I know Mr. Sabo has a new room. But last year, he was downstairs in the school, and the room was basically perfect. We had computers for our, we're doing stuff on there, like our engineering proofs. And then in the middle, it was sort of like the workshop area with tools that we needed and basically everything that we needed.
Yeah, and this year in Mr. Sabo's new room, we don't really have the same amount of space that we did in the other one. So like we got rid of all the workshop stuff, so it's kind of just like a big table. And we do have the computers still, but I feel like the resources this year were significantly reduced than they were last year.
Thank you.
Yes, come on up, teachers.
I'd love to hear a little more.
I just really appreciate you guys coming out. It means a lot to me and the program. And so this is why I teach. So thank you. Thank you so much for coming out. I appreciate it.
Do you mind sharing just quickly, because this is your two for you, right? So either your growth as a teacher, the growth of the program, or what you think, you know, over the next two, three years, you know, us continuing with implementation could do for, particularly now that you know you're going to have a JV feeder program, right?
Right.
So you've got these kids coming up from the middle school. What do you, what's that whole package going to feel like to you moving forward?
Well, I can tell you that it's, I've been teaching science for over 20 years at Rockport, and through the PLTW program, it's kind of rejuvenated me as a teacher. It's more student-centered, not so much teacher-centered. It engages the students, gets them excited, critical thinking, collaboration, minimal testing. And these are essential life skills I think that we are developing, which I developed through those, you know, through the 20 years, but I feel like this approach, which is what we call the APB approach, which is activities, project, and then problem solving, problem-based, allows these students, it empowers them. And they collaborate, they communicate, and these are essential life skills that I think are really being developed, that I'm seeing happening. And I think you guys can speak to that as well. And so what I see coming down the line is now starting even when we start, say, let's say, elementary to middle, it should excite students to get into this field. Because at this, I'd like to see more girls in the engineering field as well. Because it is, we want to promote that as well, because I think they hear that term engineering, it kind of scares them away a little bit. But I am seeing more girls in the field, which is, which is good to see. And I feel like with this feeder program through the gateway, it'll excite more students to not be afraid to take these engineering courses or computer science principles. So I'm teaching three PLTW courses now, computer science principles, Intro to Engineering Design, and this is the first year of Principles of Engineering. And it's fun. I'm having, I'm having a good time. I'm having a great time in watching these guys. They get frustrated. It's controlled chaos. But it's good. There are their seats, they're engaged, they're building things, they're not just listening to somebody talk. It's been a lot of fun, a lot of fun. So I'm excited about it, and I'm excited about developing the program. But I really appreciate everybody coming out.
Thank you for coming, boys. And I wonder, are the girls getting pizza or donuts tomorrow?
Or you could sit in here and sweat with the rest of us. Thank you.
So we'll jump back up to seven?
Mm-hmm. We didn't thank the teachers for all the time they spent in training. Darn it.
Is Eric out? I'll get him tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'll definitely go tomorrow.
Favaza?
Yep, Elliot and Eric.
So next we'll jump back up to the top, well, to the middle of the agenda, and we'll work on, share the success.
So we have Henry with us tonight to give a brief update on what's been going on from a student leadership perspective.
As of recently, due to like scheduling conflicts, we really haven't had many significant changes from the student advisory committee.
Big things coming up at the high school. Next weekend, we have a high school version, right?
Next, next weekend is Chicago the Musical, the high school production, and we're excited about that.
Henry, would you be willing to just off the cuff tell us how the change in schedule feels now that you've had a couple of months, right, because it was quite different? What's your sense of how people are doing?
My schedule is kind of different from the regular schedule, like in the sense that I have music classes, so it's like one setting for multiple classes. But in terms of like scheduling, I think many of my friends have said like, it's more enjoyable, because everything's in cycle, and it's not like, you know, you have one single block at the end of the school day and you just dread that class every single day. It's more that, you know, every day it's something new and something else to dread about at the end of the day. And that's been good.
Thank you.
I will tell you that I'm on a superintendent list serving. Middle school scheduling is always a hot button issue on that particular list serve, and so I'm going to be asking Principal Rose to help me share some of our exemplary documents out with other communities, because I do think particularly schools that are seven to 12 or six to 12 can really benefit from some of the work that we've done this year.
Next is. Okay. So we'll, first we'll hear a policy update that the committee's been working on.
So we have continued our review of Section I, which is on instruction. It's a very large section, so it's taking us a while to get through. I just looked, it was 116 pages long, but we've made it about two-thirds of the way through. So we're definitely making progress on that. We'll continue with that section next time we meet and see if we can, I don't know if we'll make it through that entire section. We should get, if not, should certainly get close. And I think we have one more section after that, so we're really, really cruising along. Did you want to mention about the ADF wellness, so that was?
So as, as I've been trying to move forward with the Wellness Advisory Committee, we actually have an internal meeting next week, and then I'll be reaching out to you and to find out.
An update during school committee?
Perfect, yeah. So what I'd like to do is, we need, we want to revisit that ADF, because there was semantic weighted language in there, and so we're going to go back and take a look at that, make sure it aligns with the MGL. It aligns with our upcoming practice. And then the subcommittee will probably take another crack at that policy and then bring it back to you for an updated second read. So that's, that policy in alignment with us taking that committee forward is really important to me, that we get kind of all of that documentation correct.
One of the things that I would add is that our MAS C consultant is excellent. To have somebody to walk us through who's done the work ahead of time, who has the suggestions for us to consider, it's so helpful. I don't know how we would go through hundreds of pages of policies on our own. I'm also, I just note that so many of our policies are already aligned with MAS C policy, which is why over and over again you see us say, we recommend adopting the MAS C policy. It's, it's so close to what we have. Or we recommend making minor, minor changes in our policy, and then it will align with the new policy. And so I think the vast majority of our policies are in alignment, and I think that's a good thing.
Okay, so the next, the next thing we have to work on for the subcommittee, the policy subcommittee, is we're going to go through, not, we're not going to, we used to go through the second read and read everything through again, but we don't do that anymore. So tonight we will approve the unfinished policies that you see there on the screen in front of us, unless anybody has any comments or questions or edits that they would like to bring up for that.
So just as a reminder, you did a first read of these at your last meeting. And so this is just to have given you two weeks of time to take a look at them, and then we would seek a motion to accept the clean versions as presented.
And really, nothing came up during the first read while we went through those, so unless you've had an epiphany or something has come up. So I will, I'll seek a motion to accept the clean versions of the presented policies in this form. Do you have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay.
So we're going to bring Ms. Goodu up for round two of the MCAS presentation, and I will find the deck quickly for you.
The first few slides in here were informational purposes, and I know you've had them and you've been able to read them, so I don't think I really need to go through much on them unless you actually have any questions. So just some information from the state about why testing, what the achievement levels are, what the student growth percentiles are, and then again, examples of what the parent reports look like.
Any thoughts, questions? Are we good on those? Good?
And then we popped into graduation requirements, which we had spoken about last time, and we explained what the EPPs were, and that information is in there. So unless you had any specific questions in these areas in terms of what it takes to pass the CD requirement in order to get a diploma, this is the last year for these scores, the class of 2025. And then a couple of slides later, it shows you what's going to happen the next few years, and then what's going to happen in the class of 2031 and beyond.
Any thoughts or questions about those particular components around graduation requirement?
I don't know if we ever talk about how many of our graduates graduate with EPPs. I don't know if I'm allowed to ask that question, or if we know that. I certainly don't mean to take anybody by surprise.
I don't have the exact figure for you, but it's a small percentage, and I would say it's between five and 10%.
Thank you.
They've changed these levels of what an EPP is over time, so it's really fluctuated from time, but I can definitely get you those percentages.
I, that's close enough, but when we watch what happens after 2025, do we expect that we'll see more students who need EPPs? And if so, do we have the resources to provide that support?
Yes, the EPP really is, as long as we have them in the right classes in a course track to graduate, and they're making the progress in those classes to do so, then we should be fine in terms of what raising the bar does. I don't know until we actually see that.
And just, we've cautioned before, right, about using percentages, and at such a small school district, when you're talking about 45 or 50 kids graduating, that five or 10% or 10% is, you know, three or four kids.
Yeah, it's, it's really a handful of kids that I know, I've worked with the ELA department, the math department, to write these EPPs and track them, but it hasn't been enough for more than one person to have to manage. So we are into the result summary. This first page goes back to the accountability data that we spoke about last time. And then this district one is an overall district profile. This is, these documents I'd love for Dr. Branco to weigh in anywhere he likes, because this is his format that he brought to Rockport. But just, just looking at the overall results in every area, when we look at grades three through eight, I think we have a decent trend here where the pass rate, the meter exceed is really hovering close to around the 50%. We'd like to see them all above 50, which we only have for science and technology right now. But I, I think that it's, it's a decent trend here.
And I think just to point out for people who are looking at this kind of a document for the first or second time only, that we've, we've got achievement level and student growth percentage in these text boxes at the same place. So SGP is that student growth. And that generally speaking, best practice and research is aiming for above 50% for student growth. So when you talk about a cohort of students across the Commonwealth, we should be proud of student growth that's above 50%. That's true for you as a parent with your child. If you see that your child's in a student growth percentage of 50% or higher, that means they're, you know, outgrowing, so to speak, more than half of their peers in that, in that like peer group in that particular year. So that's sort of how, how we assess how well we're doing. And when you talk about exceeding and meeting and partially meeting, I know Ms. Goodu is going to talk soon about, later about how teachers are using the data to move teaching and learning forward and to meet the needs of kids. But that partially meeting, that could be one question to two questions. That's also true for the kid that's in the meeting category. So we're, we're really going to start to tease out, you know, how, how close Henry got to that next accountability level or achievement level. And so that's sort of the nitty gritty of the work. But this does help you. The other thing I, I'll say publicly on this is, you know, and I, it's going to come out the wrong way. I don't, I don't think we should be celebrating beating the state. So the state equals a lot of struggling communities. And so when you take the aggregate and you pull that together, I, I feel like we should be setting the bar higher than the state average in all cases for, for the town of Rockport and for our students. So while, while growth is important, that's really where I'm looking at is growth over time. Growth, growth over time will equal achievement. That's, that's sort of how the two pieces of data come together. So when we see a state differential that's higher than 10, that makes us really happy. But when we start to see state differentials getting closer into single digits, you know, that's where we have to have conversations about, about the data. And that's true about our local data and about our national data when we use other assessment tools in the district as well.
Yeah, so like Dr. Branco said, these results are all in the hands of the classroom teachers and the departments. And they're doing some deep dive analysis. For this presentation, you really have an overview, you know, high level look at this with some reflections based on some of their feedback from their first pass, but looking at it more from a general perspective. And I did throw some cohort data in for you later on in the present, in the presentation. But the elementary school, again, I mean, I think we see some weaknesses in the fourth grade in both. There's not a lot of cohort data for, to look at for them because they've only, this is only their second year taking it. So we do have some highlights to look in there. When you look at the third grade ELA, those are, the exceeding and meeting are both higher than the state. The fifth grade science, the exceeding and meeting are both higher than the state. So we do have some good percentages there. But everything in here is still falling around, getting close to that 50%, except the fourth grade, which the fourth grade did start analyzing that data just yesterday.
It's also hard to use student growth percentage until around fifth grade because they haven't take, yeah, they really haven't taken the test enough time to have some valid data either. So once they hit fifth grade, I feel comfortable talking about student growth. So when you look at that mathematics in fifth grade, that does make me feel good that the collect, that particular group of kids as a cohort are demonstrating 53% growth over time. And we've done a lot of work in the past couple of years in mathematics at that school.
I know I say this over and over again, but what, if, if I understand what I'm looking at, fourth grade, number 36, there are 36 children in last year's fourth grade. 3.6 students is 10% of our fourth grade.
Yes.
Right? And so two children who really didn't feel well and somebody who had, had a bad day move our numbers. And, and kids who had a great day move our numbers. And, and the numbers are so very, very small. And so I guess I would just remind us that the numbers are really small. And you just have to breathe with the numbers when they're so small because there's so much variation.
They move us, they move us much more drastically.
Yes, they do. They do. In a, that's right. In a school with 400 fourth graders, I think the numbers might not move so fast.
Thank you. So you've got a couple of highlights on this one, right?
The highlights are in the student growth percentile in a couple of areas. Despite the sixth grade scores not being so great, that growth for the sixth grade English is really fantastic at the 63%. But that's what I pulled out, the ones that were much higher than the state in terms of the growth percentile here. Again, the eighth grade science again is fabulous. It's fantastic. And the seventh and eighth grade English were really, really good results as well.
And I think we talked, there is, there is such a thing as test fatigue. There is such a thing as how, how each student prepares, you know, socially, emotionally, mentally for this kind of a test, what their preparation, access and readiness is, and availability is like on that particular one given day in time, right? So I'm looking at kind of exit grade levels, you know, what do we look like when the child's in fifth grade? What do we look like when moving to eighth grade? What do we look like at the end of a high school stretch around 10th or 11th grade? So to see an eighth grade benchmark with that level of growth, and particularly in the science and math, where we put a lot of time and effort, that makes me really proud. And to your point, the percentages tell us a story by name with a handful of students that we need to work on. And if you think about all the other presentations we've done this year, and you think about the strategy, and you think about the implementation of win block and advisory blocks, as, as well as instructional coaches and interventionists or acceleration specialists, sorry. You put all of these pieces of the pie together to address the continued growth of our students and the small pockets of students who, who still need some, some greater success.
Yeah. And then, I mean, the seventh grade, I'm just super impressed with the seventh grade ELA. Just looking at the meeting and exceeding there is just fantastic. And again, the eighth grade science, but as Mark talked about the fatigue, the eighth graders did two days of ELA in April. And then came back after April break and did two days of math. And then took a week off and did two days of science, technology, engineering. And then took a week off, went to DC and came back and did two days of civics. So there's eight days of MCAS testing for the eighth grade, and that will continue this year. And now the civics is actually not a pilot anymore. It's, it'll, it's real. So we'll have more data about civics next year. And then the same with the high school. I mean, I think it's a big highlight here. You look at 65% of the students met or exceeded in ELA, 52% met or exceeded in math. And a great student growth percentile for the math. Keeping in mind that the physics exam was the very first time we have done that. So having, you know, the 46% meter exceed, that's a positive. And there's, you know, only up to go from there with the kids coming out of eighth grade and learning this new content area at this new level. And the teachers never seen what a physics exam had looked like before in an MCAS format, so.
And I know we have Mr. McCarthy sitting back there who teaches the physics class. So I, I think the other thing that Boris discussing there is we also kind of flipped the scope and sequence, you know, on its head when we made this decision. So to have this kind of data in a year where there wasn't, you know, a nice executed scope and sequence, where, where kids are still sort of experiencing science in a little bit of a funky order. I, I suspect that over time, once we settle in, we're going to see continuous improvement results. So thank you to everybody who's made adjustments at all three school levels when it comes to either scope and sequence or curriculum implementation. I'm not looking to politicize this topic at all tonight, but to me, it's, it's less about the MCAS. And it's more about students demonstrating their ability to meet the expectations of the curriculum and the expectations of the standards that Massachusetts has put forward. So that's, that is, that is celebratory for me when I see this kind of work. And it makes me feel good when I know we can identify students who are struggling and that we start to put systems in place to help those, those students.
As a student who took, like the final class that took biology as a freshman, and a brother, and a person who has a brother who took introductory physics for the first time, I think the transition went well from a student perspective. My brother said on numerous accounts that he felt prepared for the MCAS test. And he didn't have many struggles with it, but like, you know, he's, he works a lot. So that's kind of different, but you know, I think it went well.
Thank you.
I have one technical question I should have asked earlier. When we look at the graduation programs and where the scores are set, 472 for English Language Arts, 486 for Math, does that correspond with proficient, partially proficient? Where is the pass mark relative to the proficiency levels?
They're in between.
Is it in between partially and proficient?
Yes, but it dips down into not meeting in some areas when you use that EPP as well. And that's when you look at this, when you're getting up to the class of 2031, 500 is the cut to actually meet expectations. So that's where they're raising the bar to. The 470 is still in the, the partially meeting category.
But then they make, so to speak, make those points up with the EPP being completed.
Yep. Yeah, so 470 is where you partially meet.
And it's our sophomores who must meet the new standard. So, help me. This is 2020. No, it's the juniors? We're about to graduate the class of 2025?
The juniors and below.
So it's juniors and below who have the new higher bar. Thank you.
So they either took that test in 10th grade or ninth grade. And then there are retests, if you haven't met it, up to about five different opportunities to do that with some extra support.
I know in years past, when we look at those different achievement levels, you've talked about different targeted instruction or interventions for different achievement levels, trying to pull up maybe each level. So I'm wondering, have you had a chance yet to kind of look at what you've done in, you know, last year or the year before? And with that targeted interventions? And has that started to pull some kids up, their achievement levels?
It's pulled some up, not all. I have some more data about our targeted subgroups that looks really good.
Yeah, I know that's, I know it's early that you just got the status, so that might be too early.
With our new win model, we've been talking a lot about how do we shift our support models based on when in the year we are and who we're targeting. So right now we're targeting our lowest cohorts. But we think in January might flip the, flip the model to target the students who are closer to meeting expectations. We're just having those conversations with our middle school teachers in the win blocks.
And we have to be, as you know from past years, we have to be super careful. We just, that's why we don't really discuss subgroup data publicly, because in a community like Rockport.
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious about the trend about whether those, how that interventions are working out? If that's something you're going to continue doing or how.
Yeah, and right now we have the, the literacy and the math acceleration specialists are just about to work with the students who need to do a retest in November. So they're going to be working with them three times a week during win. And like I said, in middle school right now, we're targeting the lowest cohorts in literacy and math. Literacy took precedent and then math second. One grade low is going to switch up their cohorts. The others are loving the model. We have the lowest learners being taught by the actual content specialist. In, not that a special educator can't do that, but the content specialists are loving being able to work on these skills with these kids that they didn't often get to do that with because they were in other kinds of support. Two of our grade levels want to keep the same cohort for the second quarter so that they can keep making the gains. And then we'll reassess for quarter three.
And I'm not being purposely redundant. I just want to make sure I'm driving these points home. When we look at all of the changes and structural moves that we've made over time, putting together a new middle high school schedule, putting together win block, adding the faculty and the staff that we've done, getting teachers to buy into the professional development in these concepts, new materials. All of this put together allows us to do the work for kids by name. And so that, if it wasn't for cooperation between the educators and cooperation with administrators and us all giving and taking on, on systems and structures and beliefs, we wouldn't be able to do it this way. And so, you know, I'm proud of the people who are doing this work. And I do think it's one test, it's one moment in time that we can debate forever. But for tonight's purposes, it does, it helps us demonstrate where we think students are and how best we can help them meet their needs.
And it's, I did agree with Dr. Branco. He talked about the exit points, and that's what I pulled the cohort data, data for you, was the exit points instead of every grade level. So this is the current sixth grade, their fifth grade MCAS. And what you can see is what, where they were in third, fourth and fifth. So you can see it's pretty stable, little improvement in the math despite the growth percentile going down. We did have a larger percentage of that cohort of students meeting and exceeding expectations. And then instead of doing it all at the end, I figured I'd connect some of the reflection rate to the grade level. So just taking a look at this, when we talked about targeted subgroups, where they identified, of course, fourth grade doesn't have an identified subgroup because of the numbers in the course, but there were high achievement levels where those cohorts were identified. So that means the achievement percentile for the subgroup was, was pretty high. We had some scores of 93%, 92% of those achievement percentiles for those specific subgroups. Drilled down in terms of specific content areas that we know we need to do some work with, and then some highlights and things that were really good. So when you, when we talk about the last part on there, the 75% of test items higher than the state. Out of all of the questions, say there were 40, 75% of those items, our students scored higher than the state average on those items. And then 83% in the math. When we talk about question types, that is it a constructed response? Is it multiple choice? Is it selected response? So there's a lot of good data there. And we can see that writing seems to be an area that we really need to focus on and target some more. And notably vocabulary, you could be going to see that again as well. And then this is our eighth grade. Where you can see the same thing, pretty stable, keeping the ELA at that 50-ish percent in meeting exceed. Little bit lower performance for ELA, but a little bit higher for the math. And in here, same thing. You can see that the writing and the vocabulary are areas that we really need to focus on. Not just essay writing, but language conventions and grammar and that sort. Some really good subgroup results here as well, really, really good. 95%, 96%, and those are achievement percentiles for that group, which measures them against that group across the state.
And the essay, that essay result of 6% is pretty impressive. I mean, we talked a lot about how those kids, kids in this generation are struggling with long format writing. And it was really painful to us, how valuable our skill set that is in the other world. I do think that we should be taking a variety program, trying to look at writing across all four areas, take a look at most long high school.
And, and we know that cohort, the class of 2030, we need to focus on because they're weak in both areas, so.
It's interesting with the middle school results, I don't see the words constructed response over and over and over again.
It shifts to essay.
Thank you.
Not in math. Math would still be constructed response, but they did really well in the 7th, 8th grade math and the constructed response. But it should, the writing shifts to an essay format. And then our civics pilot, the students did two days of that. It's, it's, it was smaller and there's, there's different ways that they're testing them, more kind of project based, even though it's, it's in a test format. But what they did release to us was 15 test items. And our eighth graders scored above the state levels on 14 out of 15. So we, our, our kids scored 62% of all possible points they earned, which was also higher than the state. And with this, we were able to like drill down and analyze what was the lowest here, what was the highest here. This will help us help prepare them this year, but this year will be the first actual real civics MCAS that comes out. And here's our 10th grade, which is awesome. When you look at these graphs lined up back to back, those cohorts have made the improvement. When you look at these graphs lined up back to back, those cohorts have made the improvements they need to be where they need to be to pass those MCAS to graduate. I mean, huge, we went from thirty-nine percent in eighth grade to sixty-five percent passing ELA. From twenty-six percent in eighth grade to fifty-four percent in math. This is the science, it's not really a comparison because the eighth grade science is the same kind of eighth grade MCAS that's been happening for years with a really strong, solid few teachers in the middle school who've taught that for years, do a lot of MCAS prep with the physics. Again, I just noting that having forty-six percent pass, meet or exceed in the first year, I thought was, was really good. But we know we have some areas where we can improve in that. Instructional area as well. And then the same thing here, writing, vocabulary. The ELA, you know, notable, it was the best results we've seen when we look, drill it down to the actual test item analysis, each question by question. They did a really good job there. Subgroups were great in the high school too. We had eighty percentiles for some of that achievement. And then our next steps, like I said, they're all working on analyzing this data. They'll be doing that over department time and PLC time over the next few months and using that data to find ways to inform their instruction to help support the growth. We do have keys to literacy coming back and key, they're going to be working on vocabulary with grades four through eight, which is outstanding. That was not in response to the MCAS, that was our plan that we made last year. So they'll be in two year, two days doing that in person and then one coaching day. That's going to start in November. Our grades K through three will still work on beginning reading. We've had professionals from iReady come in twice already this year to do some more professional development there to help them work on the discourse aspect of having the kids talk about the math and then being able to use that diagnostic data to plan their instruction. And then there is a lot more collaboration between the high school and math, high school and middle school math departments now. We're meeting as curriculum coordinators, six, twelve, every two weeks for an hour and a half every single time. So there's a lot of really good discussion going on. That claims evidence reasoning falls in that same category. We had an amazing discussion today with all of those coordinators about what that means in their classrooms, teaching the students to find the evidence, use their reasoning to support their claims. They're going to be leading their departments in professional development on that in December and then again in March. We've started our MTSS system with an instructional coach in the elementary school. So far she's worked with a grade one teacher and grade four teacher, it's going really well. And we have the acceleration support in all three buildings now. And then the WIN, I did attach that link for you guys so that you can hopefully see that. That's our document to explain what, what I need is and what it means in all the three different buildings. The high school has it daily, except for their one assembly day. Middle school has it every other day, that's focused support on literacy or math right now. Science and social studies are doing extensions of that content area. And Mrs. Rose and I just met with the teams. We think we're going to add a WIN that's for work completion and a WIN that might be for executive functioning. And we're going to use some of our high school. NHS, thank you, NHS tutors to help with that. No more words left. And then we're going to, you know, continue to work on, we're going to work with the whole high school science department to look at that physics and work together to make some practices to improve there. And the last slide is just the same informational slide of MCAS is just one snapshot in time in the content area and it's part of all the other things that we do to meet the needs of our kids. Amy's rearing to go.
Take the lead.
I just think that there's so much thought and so much work that's gone into putting this presentation together. It's quite a lot of information. I think that the balance between the charts, the graphics are really helpful. I think the, the graphs with, that show us year to year what happens with the red, green, yellow and blue is very, very powerful. It's interesting to hear what's happening with instructional coaching, starting at the elementary school. I, I think this is a big lift and I really appreciate the information. This presentation actually makes much more sense to me, I, I wouldn't speak for anybody else, but this makes more sense to me than the district-wide accountability system presentation makes. We're looking at real students and, and growth and achievement over time. So I really appreciate the time, thank you for bringing the information to us, thank you for entertaining our questions.
Can you, can you believe it, like five years ago where we were, like panicking and everything else? Did you, do you, are you surprised what you're seeing here based on what happened in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one? Or are you like?
I'm not surprised. I am, I'm encouraged by a lot of the positive data and the positive trends because if you remember in two thousand twenty, we didn't take an MCAS at all. In twenty-one, they brought it back in this model that just half took one half, the other half took the other half and then we tried to look at the data as a whole and you, you can't. So this really is only the third year of finally getting back into doing this. I, I am encouraged at looking at the fifth grade since last year was the first year we put the HMH into reading program in at the elementary school, moved away from what was not science of reading. So I'm hoping to see some more growth there. Like Amy said, those smaller cohorts, they're really, you would think having the smaller classes helps us make them make more growth, but that, those one or two students make it harder to see a larger picture. I'm not, I'm not surprised, but I am definitely, I'm encouraged, especially when you look at that tenth grade. That's, it's like I didn't pick out the best graph I thought that would show you something more positive. I found a graph that the horizontal bar just to me seemed to be able to show you what was happening from year to year better than anything we've used here before. So I'm glad you liked it because that's what I'll keep looking at then.
I think the tenth grade is the most powerful. It's as if people wake up in tenth grade and they, they understand this is a really big deal and I need to work really hard on this test. There's, I can't think of, I'm sure we have fabulous tenth grade instruction, but the green bar is just so much bigger at tenth grade that I do wonder, it begs the question, I think, about student motivation.
And I, I think also you have to look at some of this as a, as a K through twelve implementation of some of the programs like, you know, physics first, you know, how is that going to affect the math later on? Or, or maybe doing the IAM accelerated program in the middle school, how is that going to affect them? You know, that might not have the best results in grade six or seven or eight, but it's going to translate eventually to higher. So looking at the, the full picture, I think is, is really, really important.
I also appreciate this slide kind of as the final slide, just to remind us that yes, it's one snapshot, but that as a district, we're focusing on data-driven instruction, decision-making. And it does lend to some credibility to using normed and statewide data for progress monitoring purposes to help us inform our instructional practices and our curricular adjustments. All of this stuff on this one slide put together allows us to make some really good decisions and to have teachers make good decisions for students when it comes to what their resources are, what their instructional practices are, helps administrators figure out programming. And so without multiple pieces of, of normed data, it would be very difficult to do that. And so in a small district, when we, when we talk about numbers and not percentages, it really is about impacting the lives of kids by name. And so I, I thank everybody who's been involved in the work. And it's nice, it's nice to see some celebratory data and it's nice to be able to put your finger on the data where we need to still do some work. And it's great to have a director of teaching and learning in Rockport Public Schools. So thank you. Thank you. We skipped some, oh, communication, right?
Back to communication, yes.
So a little commercial, I know we have one of our two principals in the room tonight. This connects to your goal around communication and advocacy that the leadership team has really taken to heart this year to try to help you feel like you're executing your goal and that we are supporting your work. So Amy and Amy have put together this principal family partnership series, really cool thought. And, and you can just see the, the flyer that's kind of put together on the left side of the slide with three targeted dates, with some opportunities for families to come together. They've contracted with the Bloom, Bloom is, is that right? With the Bloom company, you can come up here if you want to do this better than me. So they've contracted with Bloom and happens to be run by a, a community member. I believe she has children in our school that, right?
Yes, Karen Bloom has children in the elementary school. So I don't know her personally, but I have had the pleasure of working with her on this and she's fabulous. This company is fabulous from what Amy and I have met with them. And right away they were able to contact us with several different, different people who do all sorts of different talks and they get better rates because they'll work with other communities to do events on similar days so that, you know, they can get better, better prices for us, which has been great. And also she just reached out to us yesterday and said they're going to be sending us a promo video so that we'll be able to get something out to families, you know, in advance, not just a flyer, but you know, something where it's actually a video and the woman will give a little preview of what they're going to talk about. So our hope is that we'll have, we're doing them, you know, district-wide because as we know, sometimes it's hard to get a lot of parents out at, at our events. Sometimes you get more elementary and middle school parents than high school parents. But we're hoping if we get a group that we can get together, have an expert there, but also just have Amy and I there and counselors there and have an open dialogue because we don't claim to be experts about some of these things that are happening, but we certainly want to be partners. So we're really excited about bringing some experts out and having conversations with families.
And these topics are really timely, it's pertinent to raising children today. You know, as someone who's just raised two kids out of high, right out of high school and into college, I just think, I look at these topics and think, you know, I, I kind of wish there were forums for me to attend when my kids are still in school. And, and they do have really high-end presenters. So I, I just put Katie Greer's little bio in there, she's the one presenting for you, I believe, on November fourteenth. She's been here before, yeah, a while back. So we're really excited to do this. I thank principals Rose and Waterman for taking this initiative up and just kind of trying to close that circle in the family-school partnership. I think it's really important. So thank you for doing the work.
Can I ask a quick question? What, so there's going to be a video to kind of promote it and then it's been in the Viking Weekly News? Which I'm not sure if everyone reads all the way to the end where it is, but hopefully they do. But what are some ways, are there any ways that either the school committee or the parents can support us in sort of getting the word out and getting more people out to these events? Because that's a great, Katie Greer's a great speaker and.
Yeah, I mean, I think once we get the little promo, like you said, they've been in the weekly news. I have been talking to, Amy and I have been talking to Maria Di Stefano about putting something out on the PTO website. They're going to help us by donating some food and just being there as a support so we can have some snacks. So hopefully they'll get it out, I mean, anyway, anybody can get it out. But we certainly will put, like, you know, that, that flyer has been in the Viking Weekly News. But as soon as we get the promo from her, we can change it up and, you know, sometimes just making it a little more interactive, moving it to the top of the newsletter, we'll try to get the word out that way and then send some reminders as we get closer.
And, and refreshing your social medias too, so if we, if we can send them out through our three social medias or four social medias again and just tell our, our families and community members who are socially, social media active, just keep hitting.
And then everyone can share that, you know, to whatever pages. Because they're such great, I mean, they're such great topics and I know that everyone's putting a lot of work into it. So it'd be, just want to see as many people as possible take advantage of the opportunity.
We'll see. But even if, even if, as we know, even if ten people show up, I mean, it's a worthwhile event to host for families who want it, who are seeking it, and it's helpful for us too to know that, you know, we're partners in it with the families. So hopefully we get a big crowd, but even if we get a few, it'll be great. Thank you so much.
So, so Ms. Oger has been, you know, working hard in the past three or four weeks, getting our, and along with Allison in the office, getting SIMS data and verifying everything with the state to make that almighty October first deadline so that we have everything uploaded, so we are there and complete. And so what I'm presenting tonight is just that first enrollment update. I'll probably give you three or four of these throughout the school year, but this is the first official one. So on the left side is our enrollment as of October first and, and we know that that can, you know, float back and forth by one or two students throughout the school year. On the right-hand side is the NESDEC projected enrollment study that I included in the budget book from last year. We will get this year's NESDEC projected enrollment projection based on birth rates and housing sales, et cetera, and all the other data that they are privy to that we, we cannot crunch. So as you look at that, we're sitting at, you know, six hundred and fifty-four total students in the district, which actually puts us a little above NESDEC's projection, which is kind of nice to see. And so, you know, but again, this is not new data on the right-hand side, but the, the data on the left, just for your own knowledge base so you can see how our schools break out. So we're, we are using as we budget and as we plan in the future, we're going to use the October one data along with NESDEC's projections like we have in the past. And I believe last year before we settled and finalized the budget, we had used, I believe it was January fifteenth or sixteenth data. So we will do our best before the budget gets approved to use the most updated numbers as possible. So every couple of months I'll come back to with an update. So thoughts, questions about enrollment, I'd be happy to take them, but that's, that's where we are right now. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. San Filippo and I'm going to get out of the slide deck and I'll pull the docs up so they're easier to see. You have them in your drive. So June will take us through the FY twenty-four end of year budget. I'll put up the overview first and then the details, or do you want to jump right to the details, whatever you want? Right to the details? Talk amongst yourselves.
Okay, we usually see this quarterly and the town has finished posting everything for the fiscal twenty-four. As you know, I operate as the glass is half-empty throughout the year, so we're not overly surprised by anything. As the year went along, we had a lot of personnel changes back and forth. And I think one of the great things was, is that we tackled it with learning to live with what we have and made adjustments. Obviously not a permanent adjustment, but to give the best with what we had for the year and it worked to our advantage, I think, greatly. You know, Amy, for example, taking on two schools a year ahead of schedule. There is a financial gain with that. And just as people left for whatever reasons, re-shifting our priorities and our schedules of those remaining staff to cover, or bringing a consultant in part-time to cover it, really, really helped out. So with the end number, we actually are, did very well. So our reserves are sitting very, very well and at a little bit above what I had projected. And a little bit about this number at the bottom. If you keep on going down, I believe. Right there, yep. So that number matches up with the town's books. The wonderful thing that I get to tell you about, which is good news, is that Circuit Breaker, the fourth quarter payment arrived at the town after July first. So normally that number, that fourth quarter payment would be reflected there. It's not, because I wanted to keep these numbers matching the town books. So they have posted it in this year's number and that's an extra two hundred thousand dollars. So we are starting off this year in our reserves with another two hundred thousand dollars, which allows for anything that happens over the summer, you know, moving of classrooms and whatnot and changing of things, unexpected projects and whatnot or needs for the district can come up. That money gets to help offset that. So it's, it's, it's exciting to not be, you know, two hundred thousand short and have extra projects or extra needs of personnel or whatnot. We get to actually be in a positive spot. So this is my one sales pitch of the year where I get to be happy, happy. Which doesn't always. So this number is really good. I do on the, on the cautionary side, as you can see by the NESDEC, as enrollment. um, as enrollment drops, school choice also drops because, and Circuit Breaker would drop as well, um, which is reimbursement above foundation of, um, special ed services, for those that don't know what that is. Um, so those numbers drop and so when we budget, we need to be conscious of that. And, um, that does affect our budgeting thought process coming up. So even though we're, uh, sitting in a nice spot, I don't want, uh, people thinking that we're just flush with cash. It, it just helps, um, relieve a little bit of anxiety going forward. And, um, you know, it allows us to make some good decisions on, um, making it last and preventing an override for as long as possible.
Yeah, so I think that those are the, those are the two takeaways as I look at the end of the year. One, that as we match up with the town, um, and that, and we see these numbers, you know, come, come together, um, with that additional $200,000-ish that we're just shy of $2 million in the reserves. And so this was a conversation on the town meeting floor last year in the spring, right? Somebody got up to the mic and asked, what's the number, what's the number? We gave the number. Um, we are still very close to the number I gave on the floor in April. And again, um, that's not always the case in, in public schools. Just, you know, when you usually have a reserve that is sitting there from overrides and from, uh, secondary sources, that number usually over time goes down, um, quicker or in a more consistent manner. So, um, it is a, a little bit of a financial celebratory moment, but the reality of that almost $2 million reserve is it will allow us to continue to extend the financial lifeline of the school district. That needs to be heard, right? By, by the public. So that, that allows us to make good decision-making, to continue to be fiscally conservative and responsible as we build a budget moving forward. But that, that reserve is there to offset, um, and help us keep moving the district forward, uh, theoretically longer than maybe any of us thought we would a year ago had it not, um, had it not sat right around $2 million. So that's, to me, those are the two biggest takeaways. So one, thank you for the work, um, and for making sure that the numbers align and everything settles appropriately at, at the end of the year for the town. Um, because that's difficult going back and forth as well for the town side and the school side. But then really the fact that we've been able to make difficult, necessary budget decisions over time to allow that surplus, um, to not, it would, or be deteriorated as, as quickly as it could have. So that, thank you for putting it together, thank you for explaining it. And any thoughts or questions or?
Missed a lot of good information, thank you.
Thank you.
Says, yeah, as we wind down to the, um, school committee discussion.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to give a little update about, I was, um, tasked with finding someone from the Board of Health to join our wellness committee. Um, so I reached out to Tim Riley, who is our liaison from the Board of Health, and I CC'd Barbara, Barb McCarthy on that since she is the chair. Um, and she actually asked if she could get back to us after their October twenty-eighth meeting. She mentioned potentially Jesse Palm, who's the regional social worker being a rep. But I had said that, I, in my opinion, we really wanted a rep from the Board of Health. And then I would talk to all of you or about, or you, um, about if Jesse Palm would be an appropriate person to add as well. And I don't even know if she had time for that, but Barb was, so after their October twenty-eighth meeting, they're going to sort of decide who has time to serve on the wellness committee and if it will be Tim or if it will be Barb or a different person from the Board of Health. But that was my opinion, I don't know if you, if you agree.
Well, so yeah, I actually think I agree with you. One, I think it, there really should be a Board of Health member. Um, and then I would defer to you and, and that Board of Health member to help us decide who the extended.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'd be great to have Jesse there if she has the time to do it.
Yep, agreed. Um, yeah, so, so either, either way.
Okay, sounds good.
It's good, you, you might, you might want to stay for two minutes, though. So yeah, if you don't mind finding out on the twenty-eighth, you and I can reconnect. We're going to do an in-house meeting probably next week and then once I figure that out, I'll kind of reach back out to you.
Okay, sounds good.
Does that work?
Yeah, that's great.
Um, Madam Chair, before they run out the door, I don't usually do anything during school committee discussion, but I did add a slide in here just to, yeah, because I know they, I knew they were going to be here tonight. Um, so I had mentioned that we had a team going to MasQ to present, um, and they were, they were phenomenal. They put a ton of time in here. Um, so Mike Montgomery and Dana Weaver and Jody presented. Monty was really the king of tech, kind of hosting us all there, bringing us around, pointing us in the right direction. I don't, how many total people attended for Rockport? Twelve, twelve, twelve people attended, um, and split up on two different days to really maximize it. We had teachers going around, learning about AI, learning about new technology tools, uh, Monty working with vendors and to find out what, um, what new and shiny baubles we can bring back to Rockport. Um, but I just, just did, you know, we talked about getting off the island and letting people see who we are as, as, as instructional leaders in the community. And so I do appreciate this team going out there and presenting. It's, it's above and beyond, you don't have to present at a conference as part of your job. Um, so thank you, thank you to this team for doing that, um, really well attended. And they didn't tell the vendor that they were presenting on their product. I think the vendor found out after seeing this and then the vendor showed up and was pretty happy that, um, authentically they had a district talking about their tools. So thank, thank you to the team of people who went and to the technology department.
Thank you, that's great.
Now you can leave.
When I think about our goal around outreach and communication and advocacy, we've talked a little bit about the possibility of putting together something in writing that we would share out to the community. And so I'm wondering if at our next meeting, we might have a little update, um, on what we might do to support that? If there are things individually we should be doing or anything that we should maybe be directing you to be doing? Um, because before we know it, we'll be halfway through the year and I think we, we have a goal of putting something out. And I think we might have some good news to share and, and so I would just ask that we return to that topic. Thank you.
So does that mean we would like to talk about that or we would come prepared with ideas for? Just want to, is that going to be a topic on the next agenda?
Well, for instance, I'm not really sure whether we've committed as a school committee to craft something or whether we've said that we think it's so important that we've directed the superintendent to craft something, but I know he's busy doing everything else on his plate, so I'm not sure what it is.
I think I was directed and then I was planning on coming back to, um, ask you for your input and so, so.
We saw a beautiful banner with, with ropes and it looked awesome. I just want to keep it on our plate.
So let me put something together and then you and I could talk about what that'll look like at that next meeting. Does that work?
Yes, I wasn't sure where we were going with that.
We'll figure it out.
Cool.
Maybe just an update, that's all. I'm not asking to see anything finished, I'm just, I'm just wanting to keep our eye on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we do have a need for executive session tonight. Are, so do I have a motion to adjourn from regular meeting and enter into executive session?
And we will only.
And we will not.
We will only return for the sake of, um, we will not return.
We will not return, we will exit from executive session.
Thank you.
We will adjourn from executive session. Do I have a motion for that?
Sure, I'll move that we move to executive session and adjourn from executive session, not returning to this meeting.
Second?
Second. Roll call, yeah.
Okay, um, all in favor, roll call? We'll start.
Lorenz, yes?
Eltair, yes?
Riley, yes?
Oaks, yes.
Do we see yes? Okay, great.